Recording in progress.
At six P M on September twenty seventh, I'm sorry, September seventeenth, we'll call this meeting of the Anchorage School Board to order. Um, want to thank everyone that's here, um, staff, community members, um, students for your support and for participating in the work of the school district. All board members are present. Oh, I'm sorry, um, all members except member Bellamy, who will be joining us shortly and may be joining us online before she shows up in person. And with that, I would ask our student representative pack to lead us in the twice way.
A pleasure of agents to the flag of the United States of America and the children republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will also ask them student representative pack if he will read the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upfor Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. A S D is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it's with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you. And item three under our section A approval of the agenda would ask for a motion, uh, but also if anyone does wish to pull an item from the consent agenda to action items to please say so now if you can.
Mister Chair, hearing no members wishing to apply them from the consent agenda, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Yeah, moved and seconded, the agenda is adopted. Thank you. And again, we turn to student representative pack for the student report.
Thank you, Mister President. For my report today, um, I got to speak about a wonderful meeting, a wonderful first meeting for our senior advisory board last week. It was a busy meeting and we were packed. Um, we cannot get done everything that we set out to do, so we have some things that we delayed for the next meeting. Um, first, we got to introduce what S A B is, um, introduce advisors, our staff, and then the constitution, and then the canvas show so that for the following months, our delegates can understand how to navigate being a representative. In total, we had twenty one schools presence, and we were also able to have a couple of sixth graders attend, and we were delighted to have them there. Um, for our school reports, we had South High School give a this time digital version their school report. So it was a four minute video highlighting a lot of the special things that South High School embodies. And then the act contents, I believe, can be used by A S D. So I think I'm looking to send that video to the communications team if possible. Um, and as school reports, we asked schools, what was one success and one challenge of your schools new student orientation day? And some highlights, um, include Chugak, who said that their student government had over ninety students come in to help and make that student student orientation day work. Henshu did not have an orientation day, but they had a locker decoration day. And then Northern Lights A B C had an ice cream social instead, and kids got to meet teachers and share a nice cup of ice cream. And then that was just among many of the other answers answers, um, of how our schools orient the new students. And then for me, I was able to give my report, um, for the past, I would say, four school board meetings since our last S A B meeting. And this time I was unable to go over the outcome monitoring report as I planned to. But, um, for the coming meetings, I am hoping to create a committee that includes involved, um, S A B delegates to give more student perspective on these presentations during these meetings. We had a region four report for our Alaska Association of Student Governments. Um, and we are planning to send A S D students to the Delta Junction from October eleventh to thirteenth, and that'll be a fall conference. We also have one of our Anchorage Assembly Youth Reps present during that meeting. And Mika Pell, who's the representative, was able to introduce and tell our students their role. And then we also had our wonderful member lessons there to inspire students and get them ready and understand what the school board is. And during that meeting, we also got to talk about our resolutions that we passed last year and follow up on their progress. So one was South High School. And as a result of the resolutions that they presented, South Student Government is now a fifth hour class rather than a class, um, during the zero hour, um, which is a change that they requested. And Polaris was able to receive an alternative solution to the transportation issue. And finally, we invited our S A B delegates to attend the Association of Alaska School Board Safety and Wellbeing Youth Panel, and also to be greeters at that conference. Um, we are selecting our school business partnership partnership reps for this year, so that'd be one high school student and one middle school student. Um, and there's another couple other conferences like the Alaska Teams Against Abuse, Be Dawn Twenty Twenty Four Conference that we have, we have invited our delegates to attend. And then last but not least, the Ford N G O Next Generation Learning slash Academy Ceremony. Um, we're hoping to bring a couple S A B delegates to be greeters at that ceremony. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, member lessons, wonderful member of us.
Um, I wanted to share, uh, and to amplify words that President Pax shared with, uh, the S A B. Uh, here, he began his meeting last week, the week before, uh, with the words, you are a leader and you are worth listening to. And I just thought those were so, so such a powerful phrase, and, um, I think it can for his leadership and look forward to a great, uh, year for S A B. And I also wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that one of the two S A B, um, faculty members uh, is one of three educators nationwide to have just received the twenty twenty four American Civic Education Teacher Awards, and that's Mister Willis. And there's an article on him in Chalk Beat, uh, as of yesterday. So great leaders and great student leaders alike.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members seeing none, our military report?
Good evening. Good evening, friends. Uh, my name is Colonel Dustin Hanson. Uh, it is my privilege to serve as the, uh, Joint Base El Dorf Richardson's Mission Support Group Commander, uh, as well as to be an advocate for, uh, J Bear's, uh, military connected students and families. Uh, thank you for the space just to speak for a few minutes here and to give you a, a military update, I guess, for lack of a better word. Um, I would like to first, uh, just point out that, uh, I, I have a wonderful team behind me. Uh, my school liaison officer, Miss Adele, um, my civilian deputy, Mister Rich Tony, both have years of, of experience working with our military connected students. Um, and, and always looking about looking at what's best for our students, their families, as well as the mission, uh, within, uh, J Bear. Uh, I would first like to say that, uh, based on yesterday's events, uh, regarding some of the dynamic events with school buses and routes being closed suddenly because, uh, events beyond our control, uh, we were quickly able to work with, uh, Miss Adele, the Transportation Office, uh, my security forces who protect and guard the base, uh, so that we could ensure that our students had a, uh, safe and timely travel if needed through the base, uh, to the point where, uh, my security forces commander hopped in his Humvee, met one of the buses and said, I will personally escort you through because, again, we're about making the mission happen. I highlight this point because, uh, it, it showcases how important speedy, accurate, timely communication is between multiple entities. There was one more injection of an, of an interesting theme that, that materialized that even added to the confusion, but I'll address that at the end. Um, I bring this up because it's in our best interest, and, and I'm the one who's going to advocate for the leadership on Jay Bear to say, we will actively work with and review our processes, refine our process, processes to speed communication between the different entities, again, to ensure safely, safe and timely transportation, uh, for, for A S D schools, uh, and their students, um, despite any emergencies, we are ready to flex execute. As we prepare and, uh, as we approach this fall timeframe, I am aware, and this will be my first winter here in Alaska, uh, that there's inclement weather that may impact transportation. Uh, again, we will be working with my school liaison officer, our security forces, uh, our, our civil engineering group, our logistics group, uh, so that we are, we are always communicating what the decision is, uh, both to the students so that Johnny and Sally and their parents know whether or not they're going to be going to school that they are not. Uh, we will always try to make sure that the roads are cleared, at least on Jay Bear, and that if there are teachers who work on Jay Bear and their roads are not cleared somewhere off base, like we have to consider that into our, our factor. Um, so again, speedy, timely communication, uh, that's accurate will be of priority for me. Uh, finally, I would like just to bring your attention, uh, some parents brought to my attention, uh, an app that I think, speaking of communication, um, other, other states have been using. So if you, uh, if you go into the App Store, um, and you type in like school threat apps, uh, you'll see that, uh, you'll see like, I found Missouri, Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, Wisconsin, um, have been using these apps where basically, um, faculty, uh, employees, administrators, leaders can rapidly distribute text messages to other staff, faculty, employees, parents, uh, guardians, students, uh, when an emergency school shooting or whatever threat might be occurring, uh, these school threat apps have proven to be very beneficial, uh, in terms of like reducing, um, reducing the response times of first responders as well as increasing the odds of survival. So I'll just bring your attention, uh, school threat app, something to look into, uh, as well, that could, uh, protect our students. Uh, finally, we're in full support, um, of the, uh, academy based model, appreciate the fact that, uh, uh, A S D is, is moving forward with this. Uh, we are always looking forward on Jay Bear, looking for, um, more talent, uh, especially talent that we can retain within this great state of Alaska. So, um, we look forward to continuing to help this effort out and, uh, and, and see how we can leverage the talent, um, within our, within our workforce community. Uh, finally, I mentioned this earlier, uh, back to the communication piece. In the midst of the school buses realizing that a route is closed because of an emerging situation and having to look at possibly using routing buses through Jay Bear and working through that dynamic. In that moment, there was also a narrative that floated across social media about, uh, there might be a school threat in a school that had the initials B H S. And so we are right away, we were thinking like Bartlett High School, right? Um, it turns out that was, there's a B H S that had a school threat in New York. And so once again, it just highlighted how important communication is that's clear and accurate and timely is to all the decision makers. Um, and so it is in my best interest on behalf of all the parents to make sure that as an entire team, we are working together to communicate what's clear, accurate, and true. I stand by for any questions.
Any questions from board members? If not, we very much appreciate you taking down a break here, and, uh, we appreciate the special privilege and responsibility of educating the students of your staff. Thank you. Board and conference committee reports, anyone have anything of note? Um, I do want to note that member Jacobs, Superintendent Bryant, and myself, uh, met with, uh, Mayor LaFrance and her Chief of Staff last week, uh, just to discuss a range of issues, not anything real specific, although snow removal did come up. Um, and that it is a priority for them to try to do what they're doing. They're in the process of assessing and, and trying to build out a plan. Um, of course, plans are great until we find out what the weather is, and then then you usually need another plan on top of that. But, uh, very positive, productive meeting, I, you know, I think if need be for us to interact with the administration, uh, it will be a smooth process, um, for the next three years or so. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, uh, moving to section C, goal monitoring, college career, and life. The superintendent.
Thank you, Mister President. So I'll ask my team to join me. So this will be our first goal monitoring session of the year, and our topic will be a follow up from two weeks ago where we discussed our interim goal on on track to graduate credit. So the number of passing courses that students have under their belt, because our intent is to monitor that over the, the span of a student's high school career, so we can intervene as needed. And this is one of several strategies to increase graduation rates for high school closer to ninety percent over the next five years. Um, so with that said, per our, uh, protocol, this is our opportunity for board members to ask our team questions, um, regarding the information we presented to you last week, so I'll open it up to questions.
Number lessons.
I sent in two pages of questions, so you guys can interject as appropriate. Um, the first question I had was, um, regarding uh, sort of the division of labor. The board sets a goal and the administration creates the interims to attain that goal. And the question that I had was, what's the rationale for beginning to monitor on track status in ninth grade as opposed to sixth grade? So the transition to high school versus a transition to middle school, um, given that our data dashboard does start monitoring students in sixth grade.
Great question, board member lessons. Thank you. Um, I would say that monitoring from ninth grade through eleventh, uh, is the best predictor we have of graduation rate. Um, there's tremendous evidence that points to the importance of that transition between eighth and ninth grade. A strong start in high school, such a trajectory of success toward graduation. There's more I can say about that. And your question is a great one, and I think it may, um, warrant further consideration. Um, a number of us talk often about the importance of beginning to look at sixth grade, seventh and eighth, right, to, to build that strong trajectory of success and ultimately transition to high school. So it's sort of a, a yes and response. Um, in terms of looking at the division, high school division, really, there's tremendous, um, study and, and evidence that points to the importance of ninth grade. So we begin there. The last thing I would add is if you look at the data set, you see that our students, you know, in ninth grade, we've made a little gain, but, you know, high sixty to seventy percent. And then it grows very quickly once students get to that junior and senior year with that sense of urgency. So our theory of action is if we allow students to start stronger in high school, they'll have more opportunities for an enriched curricula, uh, less time spent doing credit recovery, less stress, less anxiety, more opportunities to, to benefit completely from the educational opportunities that we offer.
Shall I keep mine? It's just question number two.
Member Watson.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I guess I would be interested, the follow up is I would be interested in understanding any future conversations about, um, when on track status is going to be initially measured at, you know, if and when the administration decides to look at it more diff- in a different way. Um, the second question that I submitted is more of a technical question than a goal monitoring question. You shared at the prior meeting that the figures in our slides depicting the number and percentage of ninth through eleventh graders on track, uh, for last year reflected the addition of a cohort of students who earn past fail grades through non-academic opportunities, R O T C, work, study. Um, but the data dashboard again uses slightly, has different figures which I looked at. Um, and so why is the report data different than the data dashboard data?
Another great question. Thank you, board member lessons. Um, so that's no longer the case. We, we've adjusted the issue, so I, that's a important feat. Uh, Deanne Carroll is here with us from, you know, uh, assessment and evaluation. She took the lead in the, the technical work here, and that work is to be recognized and applauded for sure. Um, so just going back to our last meeting, we recognized a, a two to three percent discrepancy in the data showing on data dashboard from what we were pulling internally. Uh, they did a deep dive and identified that students who weren't receiving a letter grade were not being counted in that internal poll. Hence the discrepancy. Um, and so if we were to apply the adjustment to last year's data, you'd see about a two to three percent discrepancy. Uh, and Deanna and her team have actually pulled together that data. We're going to send it to you all and, uh, uh, this coming week uh, in Board Connect, so you'll be able to review it. Um, all that said, the goal is the same, the trajectory is the same, and now we have data that's accurate. Uh, and the data we're pulling internally is the same data that's showing publicly that we're sharing with you all, with our parents and families, and with our educators.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Wilson?
So I'm, I'm just looking at the data, and it's, it's really a general question of what would you? I, I see improvements, and I'm always happy to see improvements. Um, I see improvements in particular, um, economically disadvantaged groups, our black students, or, um, Alaska native students, and a, a lot of our, our students that, um, traditionally have had a lower percentage of students on track. So I, I, I see that progress. So where do you feel, um, the work is being done to improve those, that, that assistance to, to put our students back on, um, on track and keep them on track? So more of a general statement, where, where do you think that work is being done, um, to make those improvements? And where is that focus going to continue?
Yeah, thank you, board member lessons, or Wilson, sorry. Um, I have a response to that, and then we've also invited Sean Prince, you know, current Senior Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary. Um, he was also Principal of Bartlett High School last year. So he's going to have some great insight as to how the work is playing out in our schools, which is really valuable. We have a lot to celebrate here, and I'm pleased that you elevated it for discussion. Uh, even if you apply the adjustment to these gains shown on the on track status breakdown by demographic group, you're seeing really significant catch up growth, um, for many, most of our underperforming student groups. So we're excited about that. If we fast forward the slide deck to our strategic action plan, which increasingly we're trying to make real and relevant, we're only trying to identify those things that we're really working on, um, so that it's a transparent document. Uh, my own reflection, we're looking at tools, we're looking at resources, and we're looking at new innovative practices. So one of the tools I would point to was created this last year, uh, by Assessment and Evaluation Unified Insights, which allows all of our educators, our principals, our counselors to access, uh, timely data, really in a very intuitive, quick push of a button. We can see attendance, we can see grades, we can see G P A. We can sort by student group, sort by grade level, sort by school. Uh, and we're building the capacity of our educators to use this powerful tool. Put that into the hands of a P L C, and you're ready for action. Uh, those educators every Monday morning can look at that data, and a number of them are, and they can see students who are falling off track in any number or combination of those key metrics. Uh, we're focusing hard on ninth grade for all the reasons I talked about earlier. Um, we're also focusing on those underperforming student groups, trying to elevate our collective attention, uh, to make sure they're getting the support they need. And I'll, um, invite Mister Prince to, to share his insights from Bartlett. And I will say, and it's a celebration of Bartlett, when you see the data we're going to send you this week, it has a breakdown of each of the high schools, choice schools, alternative schools, Bartlett High School had the largest gain, even when you apply the new metric, uh, than any of the other high schools, about a five percent on track gain. So a lot of good work happening there.
Um, thank you, Mister Backman. Um, member Wilson, just, just to be clear, I, I want to make some comments as, as Eric was so nice to say, former principal of Bartlett with some really fantastic games, but I don't want to take any credit for that, those things. I think that schools will see gains when they have, uh, intentional focus and they have specific goals in mind. So when you look at the work for equal opportunity schools and you're looking specifically to encourage students that might be underrepresented in certain areas of your school, or you're trying to pay closer attention to attendance or a sense of belonging, um, knowing that students have assets in the building and they have teachers who care when you look at your climate connected surveys. As a leader in the building, when you have taken very seriously one of the metrics in our climate connected survey, I'd, I'd speak to, had a conversation with the principal of Chugiak today, and, and we were talking, and, um, Ms. Hatswell said specifically that they have, as a school, bought into this idea that every student has, has to have someone who's going to miss them when they're absent. And they have gone through intentional daily work for the last few years, and I think that would be true of Bartlett. I think that'd be true of any school that you look at that's seeing gains in these metrics. And it's what they're paying attention to and what daily actions they're taking to make sure that those things move. It's anytime we're talking about goal setting, I'm sure most of you are familiar, there are lead indicators and there are lag indicators. A lot of what are on track me- metrics are those, the lag, you know, graduation is a lag. the lag, you know, graduation is a lag indicator. It's the daily intentional work that you do every week when you meet with your faculty. It's when you talk with your teachers and when your teachers are talking with their students, when you're connecting with parents. It's all those daily intentional things that are gonna lead to a better outcome for on-track graduation. To key into a previous question that Member Lessons had said, when do we want to start talking about on-track graduation? I think the earlier the better. If you start talking with sixth and seventh and eighth graders about credits that matter in passing classes and pointing them to a goal that they may have, be it college, career, military, whatever, the sooner we can start talking about their goals, the sooner they're gonna start paying attention to the daily actions they have to take to meet those goals. So if their goal is college, then they want to start focusing on their daily classes and their attendance to get there. If they want to end up in a career, then they need to start focusing on what are the daily actions they need to take so they can be successful in that career. It's always about what are the daily things that we're doing that are gonna meet that goal in the end. Member Wilson.
Can I follow up and comment more than the question? You did mention PLCs and the opportunity for principals and staff to use that time to address the students that need the need that the additional attention or at least focus on identifying those students. So what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the PLC time is very valuable to assist the schools in assisting identified students and helping them, correct?
Absolutely correct. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Member Lessons?
Um, I feel like I want to come back to the one of the questions that you asked, but I'm just gonna keep moving in order of what I as I conceptualize questions. And so one of the questions that I had was what, you know, right now, the administration assesses students as on-track by having attained an aggregate number of credits each year, five and a half by fresh- the end of the freshman year, eleven after the end of the sophomore year. However, in order to graduate, you need to have one credit in language arts your freshman year, one credit in social studies, one credit in math. And so the question is, why are we just looking at aggregate numbers versus specific sort of metrics that need to be attained each number? I mean, each year, excuse me.
Yeah, great questions, Board Member Lessons. That was actually a discussion that we had with the data group when we were working on these data polls and looking for accuracy. And I'm gonna let Deanne Carroll respond. There's a technical aspect that's very complex to the question that you're asking. And in the end, ensuring that students are taking the right classes toward graduation, given all the complexities of 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 student lives and families and commitments and all the rest, it really requires a counselor working with that student to ensure they're making appropriate progress. It's easy and accurate for us to measure the number of classes students are passing and the credits they're earning. Deanne, do you have more to add here on a technical sense? How we might go about measuring not only the credits earned, but credits earned toward graduation, grades nine through eleven?
One of the complications that arises when we're doing our data poll is that when we're looking at courses, for instance, a social studies class or a language arts class, there are sometimes hundreds of course codes that could qualify for a language arts class. And so when when we're pulling all of that data, it can become a huge monster to try to sift through. And so one of the things we really want to do is track the number of credits students have and trust that our counselors are sitting there working with their students at their buildings to make sure that they have what what's actually needed. So what we what we don't want to do is track specific course codes. What we want to do is track the credits and then let our staff at the schools work to make sure that they're the right credits in the right categories.
Member Lawson.
This is an off-the-cuff, and it's gonna be budget-related. My working understanding is that the metric that we use for allocating counselors to high schools is high, more students per counselor than maybe national best practices because it saves us money. And I just wonder if because we're being efficient, do kid, are kids falling through the cracks because counselors are taking on larger workloads than maybe their peers are nationwide? Or am I making, I mean, could the could our counselors be better at their jobs if their if their ratios were lower? Would the service delivery be better?
Member Lessons, there is value in having more counselors. As a former college counselor myself, we would love more of those adults, but I also want to give credit to the education professionals who are in our building who have led to our having an eighty-one percent plus graduation rate. So I think that's a proxy for the system is healthy, but there's also room to grow.
I guess my, I would just be interested, you know, as we have budget conversations, you know, hearing recommendations for the staffing allocations, which are really going to, at the end of the day, have an effect on, you know, a student's ability to move through their school. And it was just something that occurred to me.
And and I would interject, having come out of middle school, this references what Mr. Prince said, and I think what Member Lessons is asking, to actually identify and personally connect with students that aren't doing well in the team setting and the team planning time, I saw teams that 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 was one of the things they did because you the teacher had a normal caseload of about a hundred and fifty or more students, but four teachers shared about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five students. And they divvy up and say, well, I'm I'm gonna take this student and this student, and you take that student and that student. But as we let PTR float up and and to a degree, I guess we could have a CTR, counselor teacher, or counselor-student ratio, CSR. It it becomes harder to do that. I mean, because it's a little bit outside the mainstream duties. And and it just becomes harder to get it down to a list of names you can identify and touch. And I I think that's one of the hidden damaging things as we have made the adjustments that we've had to make. And Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To add to, if not close the the loop on Member Lessons comments, which I appreciate regarding school counselors, I have the the stat on speed dial. It's it's one of my favorites, that the American School Counselor Association recommends a two fifty to one ratio. And AST, to the best of my knowledge, is is not close. It's disappointing on one hand because some breakdowns of our labor workforce classified school counselors as some sort of fictitious nebulous administration group when, you know, we just heard how integral they are to supporting educators and their work in the classroom, but that's a conversation for another night. I was looking at page eight of the implementation stages, in part inspired by Member Wilson's question about PLCs. And it sounds like a lot of the the good work under data discussions is happening and is is kind of part of the secret sauce that has improved outcomes to where we're above projections at the current time. I'm curious if there's a reason why those steps aren't labeled as in progress or what maybe is missing before that flips the switch. And I'll also that I appreciate that we're trying to keep this as accurate as possible. This is one of the slides that is my favorite.
I appreciate the question, Board Member Jacobs. And yeah, I tend to agree. We we chose next steps for the report because the rollout of the data system really occurred last year, and we continue to build capacity. That said, Unified Insights is is actively being used at all of the comprehensive schools. And we continue to work with leadership and PLC teams. Really, as we speak, presentations are happening tomorrow focused on actually our whole elementary school team on MTSS and Unified Insights and its use is gonna be one of the focal points. So it's a great question. Next steps in progress, we're we're somewhere in between.
Just a quick call, kind of in the same vein. What I think attracted about PLCs and their rolling out last year was we spent a bulk of the last academic year building our muscle related to how PLC should work. You know, we looked over educator recruitment and retention data this earlier this year, and you know, we we lose hundreds of educators a year. At this point, we know why, right? We're talking about wages, healthcare, lack of a pension, full social security benefits in Alaska. How how can we ensure that we're building those those muscles and in our new educators that we're bringing on? Is it or is it ongoing training? Obviously, we can start to replace a year training, you know, just one period, and is that part of our challenge in kind of next steps or in progress?
Can you reframe the question just from?
Sure, no, happy to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's start it off as a thought, maybe wander near a question, but not close enough. How has the recruitment retention challenges of where we're changing over educators, I want to say it's roughly fifty percent at a five-year cycle, not just in AST and in Alaska, how will that impact us building capacity with PLC usage and using that time wisely? Thanks.
Yeah, great. I'll I'll have a quick response, and Mr. Prince may have more to add for sure. We've been very intentional each of these last two years to front-load PLC work with very clear, explicit direction and support about their purpose. It's also important to note that each PLC has a leader, facilitator, if you will, who is really well-prepared to bring people on board. We're committed to very specific protocols, ways of conducting the meeting, which which really dictate the nature of the work, providing structure, timelines, specific roles. So it's easy for a new educator to come in and participate actively. One of the norms of those groups is active participation by all members, for example.
Can I add something? To Member Jacobs, another thing that we do is in our new Teacher Institute in the in the fall, we go over PLCs there. And then at elementary schools, they also have a reboot. So remember when we started this, we were going from a from a level of zero. Nobody had PLCs. And now we have, even though we're losing teachers, we have a good set of educators that actually have gone through this and are kind of working alongside and training those other new teachers as they come on board. So I just wanted to say that new and and the New Teacher Institute is a pretty big deal, and we also have a canvas shell for PLCs at the elementary level also.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, at the district level, we do play a role in terms of the scope and sequence for what types of things that PLC teachers should be focused on. But having been to about half of our PLCs this year at different schools, I've been pleasantly surprised that right now we are in the middle of a soft reboot, so I'm seeing the principal really taking an active role in setting the tone for what a PLC is and what a PLC isn't. And what a PLC is not is a meeting where we're receiving information. What it is is looking at our actual standards and thinking through the lens of how am I going to utilize this data to improve my expertise in my content area? So I got to see a PLC this Monday, actually, where it was a mix of our veteran educators that did the hard launch with us last year. There were also new educators that were doing part of that soft launch, right? This is their first four weeks. But then we also welcomed in new educators who had had PLC experience from other districts that were even adding to that lens. So that that's really impressive because all that to say that districts across the country are really utilizing that PLC model, and we are a little behind the ball. But thanks to the board's support, now we're right on par with the other districts, so we're in a good spot.
Member Watson.
Um, great questions. Um, one of the questions that I had touched on one of the elements that impacts graduation rates that were mentioned on slide seven specifically, it was students' perceptions of school safety. And I guess I was just wondering, what are what elements of the school experience does the administration see as shaping students' perception of safety? Do those perceptions vary by school or by subgroup of students? And if those, if they do vary, you know, what is taking place to improve perceptions and and reality?
Yeah, Board Member Lessons, that's a great question, and it's on all of our minds, I think, these days, perhaps more than usual. Others may have more to add, but I I think perceptions of state safety begin with the quality of relationships our students have with educators in the building, adults in the building. As we talked about some last year, principals now work from a document, principal expectations, our effort to really simplify and prioritize the work of our building leaders. One of the metrics we're looking at comes straight from the Climate Connectivity data. Do students have a trusted adult? And that's a metric we're looking at very closely, and it is really the basis for a sense of safety. The other thing I would add is that we promote uniformly district-wide this idea of you see something, say something. And tell an adult, tell your parent, we encourage parents to let us know. And it's a countless number of incidents we've been able to address quickly because of reports like that. And every time we have a report that's addressed, we celebrate the student or the community member who brings that information to us.
Member Lessons, I would just add a little bit to what Mr. Backman had said over you know, fourteen years of the principal in this district, I can't remember a time where an incident that was about to come become a critical incident didn't originate. Administration awareness started somewhere other than a student coming to a trusted adult. If there was gonna be a fight, if there was gonna be a threat to the school, if there was gonna be something that might disrupt the educational process, it always made its way to security and principals coming from a kid because they care about their community. When they care about their community, they're willing to say something to protect that feeling of safety. Some of the apps that we've talked about, the school district test, stop it, we have a bunch of different ways. Most of the time, the information that comes to us is from a member of the community or a student who reaches out to a coach or a teacher or a counselor and says, hey, I heard this is gonna happen, you might want to know about it. And then they go about their investigation and they take care of a lot of problems before they become problems. So it comes from kids and their belief in the system in which they're a part of. Other questions from the board? Member Lessons.
I wanted to talk about the academic areas specifically where students are struggling. So what do you, what do we know about the academic areas, you know, as a freshman or a sophomore or junior moves through their day? Are there certain areas that are standing out as causing students to be off track for graduation?
Yeah, great question, Board Member Lessons. I would point generally to core academic subjects. And it's gonna vary by grade level and most likely by school. I think we looked at the question last year and found that the the greatest difficulty in terms of students not passing the class was in math. Probably particularly in ninth grade, though we need to look at that and confirm that. Science is also a challenge. We rolled out new science curriculum, Biology for All, which I think is gonna prove very promising in that regard. And then different students depending on the group they represent, might have difficulty. Second language learners, perhaps in science, given the vocabulary challenge, perhaps in language arts. It really depends.
This is kind of a follow-up, but maybe it's a separate question. We have yet to review, you know, May twenty twenty-four AK star. We have yet to review, you know, May 2024 AK star data for reading and math. That'll come later this year or later this fall. In general, does proficiency data on these formative or summative tests, does proficiency data tell us anything about students being on track to graduate?
I would venture a hypothetical answer, and that would be yes, absolutely. Um, we can look at that. Do a quick study, those students are proficient and also on track. I'm guessing there's a very strong correlation. Um, but let's pursue it and confirm it.
I mean, I guess I'll share that in playing around the deed website, which is open to the public. It strikes me that, you know, we have all of, you know, lots of student groups or, you know, you can click on any, click on the district level. You can click on school levels within the district. You can click on that grade level and see what's happening really quite down, you know, at a very granular level. It is upsetting, and maybe that's an honest term, uh, that our students who are economically disadvantaged are significantly less proficient in many of these assessments and proficiency is not the same as growth and I'm a big fan of growth. Um, and I understand that there's a correlation between proficiency and economic status. However, there's also, it's also true that our economically disadvantaged students are less likely to be on track for graduation. And when I think about a student's trajectory from kindergarten through 12th grade, it worries me that we have concentrations of students who leave elementary school not proficient. I would guess that they're likely to struggle in middle school. They're leading middle school. Very low rates of proficiency. And I would guess that they are among the students who are most likely to be on track for graduation. And so I understand that these things are not perfect one-to-one and correlation is not causation. But it just with, you know, the board has an equity policy. And I feel like that, you know, at the end of the day, how we allocate our resources. It's, it's, we, we're putting, we need to put our money where our mouth is. And if we want to see growth in our students, students and student groups and schools that need the most growth and support deserve the resources to do so. And if our goal, if board goal number three is to have students graduate to improve our graduation rate, and realize this is a time for board questioning and not for board guidance. Uh, but it, it just, these things are quite connected in my mind that we have got to focus our attention early on to make sure our students who leave elementary school are ready to grapple with middle school curricular materials and are ready to grapple with, um, high school curricular materials. And that's something that worries me.
Just a quick response. So in this respect, I, I really want to acknowledge and celebrate the board's commitment to early childhood literacy and point out the direct connection, though it's going to take some time between that commitment for our students K through three, let's include numeracy as well and our graduation rate. It's going to take time, but there's a direct connection between those, those three goals. And I applaud the commitment to early childhood literacy. It may be the most important work we're doing to, to address, you know, underperforming student groups, including economically disadvantaged.
Like to note for the record that we've been joined by member Bellamy. Number Jacobs?
And thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to, to first note, I, uh, some appreciation for something Mr. Prince said regarding pathways for students to feel comfortable and expressing concerns and the necessity for having a trusted adult. When, um, we look to implement stop it, one of the most promising, promising things I, I heard during the conversation is the goal is to implement it so you don't need it. Um, as, as when you implement a method of anonymous reporting, um, anyone, students and adults, they both feel more comfortable reporting on the record, knowing they have that option. And so, um, I recognize that that's the, the goal is to make it an obsolete item that isn't used by the district. And I'm excited to see that day occur. But I guess to, to form a question based on kind of the, the conversation was just happening, I, I, I do get the sense that stability, both in the direction of the district and where our North Star is, that's community driven, related to increasing reading proficiency, numeracy and college current life readiness should stand to benefit students within ASD and data showing that it is. Um, I guess from a converse side, what's the risk if we, we lose sight of those items? I mean, is it, is it a given that proficiency will drop if we take our eye off the ball? And, and is that a concern of the, of district administration, frankly?
I can get us started. I think that's a great question. Member Jacobs, where that right now, the way that I view it is that the board goals are our North Star. And that's where, when we come to the board with our budget adoption, for example, or recommended budget, we have those conversations. I know we've had some tough conversations in recent years around class size, for example, because we understand that the more and more students that we have in our classes, we may be further away from achieving our goals. But, um, when we make the decision to make, uh, you know, cuts in other places, um, it's because we have that North Star in mind. If there weren't board goals, then it would be up to interpretation of who, who's in these seats. Um, and, and people will change out in all of these seats at some point. Um, but regardless, as an institution, we have goals that are setting our direction. So from my vantage point, the board goals are very helpful in me, I turn internalizing and externalizing my priorities to staff members. So I just want to thank the board for having that clear focus and direction.
Number Watsons?
Um, this is, uh, I guess a little bit further down the slides, number seven. It's under approach and it's the second box. It says align courses, pedagogy, curriculum instruction to support rigorous, authentic and meaningful learning within career pathways for students. And, um, maybe this still falls into the RFI I've submitted about for more information about um, freshman academy and the academies of Anchorage generally. But I am curious about how under approach, um, how students are going to be notified about their opportunities to learn outside of the pathways within the academies of Anchorage. This is in accordance with the board's memo that it adopted during the master plan of the academies of Anchorage. So I guess I don't, I assumed that this was referring directly to the academies of Anchorage, the point about learning within career pathways, but the board's memo said something to the effect of opting out of career pathways.
Yeah, I can get us started on that conversation. So the academies of Anchorage, I think is a great pillar to get us towards our North Star, right? Which is to increase graduation rates. With that said, the board did, uh, adopt a memo that had important provisions in it, one of which was an opt-out policy. So in coming months, we'll present to the board what that looks like. But in general, we want to make sure that even if a student is not in the academy, is that they can clearly articulate with the assistance of their families, what their for your plan is. And that's a common thing that I see across states. Um, in Texas, we called them personal graduation plans where by eighth grade, early ninth grade, your parent needs to sign off on your four-year sequence of courses. And whether you're in a career pathway or not, that's going to make sure that you're in the right support courses. If you're a student that's struggling in math, it's going to make sure that you're not missing or double taking a class. And it'll make sure that, let's say I'm a student that aspires to be a professional orchestra, um, member. Um, that I'm taking the electives that will push me in that area that I had indicated that is of interest to mine if it doesn't neatly fit into an academy. So even for opt-out students, they are not going to opt out of the vision that we need to have a coherent plan. So you're set up for success, whether it's college career or beyond.
If I may, I would only add that that work uh, is primarily going to happen in the face class, along with a number of lessons that include awareness of on-track status, uh, which is something we haven't attended to in an intentional way as a district. Making sure that when a freshman comes in, uh, they appreciate the importance of earning credits toward graduation of, as Dr. Bryant said, having a four-year plan that leads not only to graduation, but extends beyond to college career life ready goals.
All right, I think I've got maybe one more question and then I'll turn off the mic for the night. Um, I wanted to go back to the slide that member Wilson brought up. Uh, it was slide five, which is no longer on this screen. And, um, absolutely wanted to also celebrate what appears to be almost a 6% increase in the percent of economically disadvantaged students on track to graduate last year. Um, through work, like the unified insights, through relationship building, through improved senses of school safety, uh, hopefully through improved attendance, all of those things. But maybe this is just more of a technical question. It also struck me that actually ASD lost a number, you know, 469 of those students who were considered economically disadvantaged and it gained 300 not economically disadvantaged students. So it's not, you know, the exact same population. So, you know, families are, life happens to families. And so I just, I was trying to understand whether we're doing meaningfully better. I'm not trying to devalue anything, meaningfully better in this respect. Or if the increase in the percent of economically disadvantaged students being on track is also a product of families changing, you know, the boxes that they're checking. You know, if they're, if they're at a certain threshold or not. And maybe it's just sort of a a weird question.
No, that's, that's a really good noticing. Um, part of the processes, our, our data is really only as good as what our families are going to self-report. So there's a possibility that, um, families did change the self-reporting or that we, um, are looking at a totally different set of population for a few hundred students. But when you're looking at the numbers as large as, as we are, you know, that, that growth is um, in part to some of the work that we're doing, whether we're pulling the data in the way that we did in the past or the way that we're doing now. Um, some of that is reflected in there as well. So that's, that's a really good question and we really won't know because we're not looking at the same cohort.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, um, if you need to continue or complete it. We thank you very much for detailed information and good news, which is in scarce supply these days. Thank you. On our agenda, this brings us to public comment. Okay. This is the time we've set aside to hear from the public. We welcome comments, which are very important to us in governing the district. We set aside an hour at this point in the meeting to hear from people who've signed up. Those not heard during the first hour will be heard at the end of the agenda. This is an opportunity for our board members to listen and for members of the public to inform the school board about their views. So therefore we don't engage in discussion or questions or back and forth. Um, all public comments are limited to three minutes. There's a timer in front of the dais. There will be a bell sound when you have 30 seconds left. And I think those are all the highlights. Like to start, we have, uh, Ms. Crowden signed up for telephonic. Has she been able to connect? And we will turn back to her in a few minutes. Uh, second on non-action items is Ms. Ide, who is here in person. If you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gabby Ide. I'm with Moms Liberty Anchorage. And I'm here to, um, just reflect our support for um, the proposal for patriotic activities as it was originally, uh, written and recommended by committee in May of this year. I was really excited to see this come through committee so quickly. Uh, but I think that our excitement was a little premature because what I see um, as it's been rewritten is, is a little bit toothless. Uh, I think that, uh, there may have been some concerns with adding, um, some other mandatory activities, uh, because there, there are already so many mandates. And I would just, uh, hope that the board would consider looking at some less useful mandates to, uh, reduce the gross number of mandates, if that's a serious concern. Uh, and, and also just that, uh, that there, there might be some concerns over instructional context. And then I would, uh, encourage the board to consider exposure as the first catalyst to instructional context. I think that if the, uh, if ASD is required to do some of these many great, uh, patriotic activities that were in the original proposal, that the students are going to ask questions. Um, I know my son did when, uh, he was in as, as early as fourth grade. And, uh, it was really an encouraging discussion in, in the classroom. And I think that having this as something that's required fits with the goals. Um, and as was earlier noted, when, when you have mandates that fit with the goals, they tend to focus the board, the focus of schools on what's really important. I think these patriotic duties are, um, integral to, uh, our, our culture as Alaskans, our culture as Americans. And it would be really important that, that our students go through K through 12, having, you know, repeated exposure to the activities that were in the original proposal. Also have a couple of questions. So I hope this will be pulled for discussion so that I can get some feedback on some of the things that I, I might have missed. The, um, I'm, I'm a little bit confused about why it was recommended in May and then it was sent back to committee. I don't think that there was a reason on record for that. I'd love to hear some information about that. Um, I also note that there is a mandate for the pledge of allegiance and Polaris, to my knowledge, still isn't practicing that. I understand that that would be a simple fix. I wonder if that has been communicated to that school. And if so, what was the feedback or what are the results or when that might be done? And then, uh, and then I, I would like to also know what were, um, some other reasons, if I haven't addressed all of the objections that uh, were considered in doing the rewrite of this proposal to remove both the mandatory, mandatory status and also, uh, the specific patriotic, um, activities that would have been really helpful if they had stayed in the proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And was Ms. Crowden able to connect? Okay, um, we will come back to her towards the end of the meeting. When we have our second round of public comment. That is everybody that's signed up for public comment on non-action items. And there is written public comment in board documents for members to see. That brings us to section E, our consent agenda. Um, do any members see items on the consent agenda? They want pulled to the action items. Seeing none, if I can have a motion to move the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda is written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? Member Higgins? Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Student representative PAC?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. We have accepted all the consent agenda items. Go to section F on our action, action items. We have one item tonight. Uh, memorandum number zero two two, if I can have a mo, a motion to adopt.
Chair, move to adopt ASD memorandum number zero two two, naming the Bartlett High School wrestling room for Josh and Caleb Green to approve the request of the Bartlett High School staff and our school community to formally name the wrestling room at Bartlett, uh, high school, the Josh and Caleb Green wrestling room.
Moved and seconded. Um, we do have two members signed up to speak to this item. Let's start. Our first speaker is Mr. Sean Prince, followed by Principal Ballard.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Bryant. Josh Green was a beloved man of many hats. He was a principal, an inspirational educational teacher, mentor for new teachers and administrators, and a wrestling coach for over 25 years in the Anchorage School District. His son Caleb Green was a product of the Anchorage School District, who won state wrestling titles and football titles for Bartlett High School as a student himself. Their tragic deaths compelled the local community to advocate the naming of Bartlett Wrestling Room in their names. And if you had known these men, attended their memorial services, read the letters of support for this dedication, you would have heard some of the following. And if you'd known them, you would have remembered them as well. You would have heard of their laughs, how infectious they were. You would have heard of Josh's ability to tell a story. Most of them were true. You would have heard of Caleb, Caleb's love for the sport of wrestling, his community, his family, and his friends. You would have also come to know and understand Josh's deep, deep commitment to education, service, and mentorship. Josh was an educator in the Anchorage School District for over 25 years. For those who knew Josh as a teacher, coach, or a principal, they knew that he was always putting kids first. As a mentor, Josh was known for his ability to inspire and guide young men and women, both in wrestling and in life. His passion for wrestling was matched by his dedication to nurturing his athletes and cultivating them as individuals. Josh instilled a philosophy of hard work in his wrestlers, often pushing them to their limits during practices. He believed that physical conditioning and mental toughness were keys to their success. Josh's influence was long lasting, with former wrestlers citing his impact on their personal and professional lives, especially with their emphasis on hard work, perseverance, and mental toughness. Caleb demonstrated the same work ethic, achieving success through hard work, winning state titles in wrestling and in football, and also going on to wrestling college. When we think about their personal connection and support of others, we are reminded that Josh maintained a strong personal relationship with his athletes, supporting them not only in wrestling, but also in their own personal growth and development. He often told them that he believed in them and offered emotional support for them during the many difficult times of their lives. Caleb, like his father, left a deep impression on his teammates and the community. His victories and personal qualities were a source of pride and inspiration for those who knew him. For those who trained under Josh and for Caleb's friends and peers, the wrestling room represents more than just a place for training. It holds the memories of their journey together. Naming the room after them would immortalize their contributions and maintain their presence in the school. The letters that were attached to the memo or memorandum show strong community support for the former wrestlers, coaches, friends, and family, who all emphasize how naming the room after Josh and Caleb Green is a fitting tribute to two individuals who gave so much more to the sport and to Bartlett High School. By naming the wrestling room after Josh and Caleb Green, their stories will serve as a source of inspiration for future athletes. I like to say student-athletes. So would Josh. Their legacy would remind students of the importance of hard work, resilience, and the supportive community that the Green family embodied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ballard?
Val Ballard, the principal at Bartlett High School. I have no prepared remarks for this evening, but I wish to be here in solidarity with the staff and family members, both past and present, who really put together a grassroots initiative to see this wrestling room named after their loved ones. I also want to thank Sean for those wonderful remarks. There's nothing that I could add to paint a better picture as to the impact that both Josh and Caleb made. And what Sean hasn't shared is just how much of an impact that both of those men had on his own life. And I would really like to see that room dedicated to their memory. I'm a historian before I'm an educator, and at some level, a building is nothing more than a structure, right? Buildings rise, buildings fall, buildings are rebuilt. It's the memories, it's the experiences that take place within those buildings and within the rooms of those buildings. And that's what makes a building a school. And in this case, at Bartlett in particular, it's what makes our school a home. And I heavily encourage you to vote on naming one of the rooms within our home after Josh and Caleb Green. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any board members have comments? Member Wilson?
I, I did not know Josh or Caleb, but after the accident, I heard lots of wonderful stories about them. I've heard the positive impact they've made. I've, I've raised student-athletes, so I know the commitment that coaches put forth and give to their students. And, and I, I really appreciate that. And it sounds like it's, it would be something that would be really appreciated by the, the Bartlett community, by the families there, and by the Green family. So I will support it.
Any other members? I, I would like to say that while Mr. Prince spoke and Principal Ballard alluded, we get caught up in budgets and buildings and bonds. But it really is the people that staff our schools that make the outcomes. And it's unfortunate that, that it takes something tragic because that is usually what keys the, the naming of these buildings. But it is important that we remember people and, and note it as we move forward, especially when, when the community calls out for it on that. If there's no further comments, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll. Member Bellamy?
I, I'd just like to, I did have the pleasure of knowing and working with Josh. And he was that new generation of school leaders, meaning he was much younger than me, much more exciting than me, had better ideas than me, had the privilege to work with his son as well. And I have fond memories of the work that he did for our, in our schools, with our kids, with our families. So I say, go Bears. Go Bears.
Any other member comment? If not, Sullivan, if you'll call the roll.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Student Representative PAC?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. We have passed a motion to rename the wrestling room at Bartlett High School. Go Bears. Thank you. That brings us to our non-action items. Are there any that members would like to pull for discussion at this time? Member Donley?
I'd pull item number four, memorandum number 30.
Anyone else have anything to discuss? If not, member Donley, if you wish to speak to memorandum 029.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should share the concerns of the witness tonight, I mean, the testimony concerned with the changes that were done in the Governance Committee to this resolution or this policy. With the exception of moving from regulation to policy, the statutorily required Pledge of Allegiance in our classrooms, this policy ensures no new patriotic activities will occur. A student in an ASD school could could go to school every day of the year and never miss a class and not hear the National Anthem or the state flag song during an entire school year under this policy adoption. A past survey of music teachers revealed not all of them are even teaching the National Anthem or state flag song in music classes, even though it is included in the suggested curriculum. This new version of this policy has no required compliance standard with the federal law that millions of federal aid to this district receives their contingent on, which is to provide some educational teaching of the U.S. Constitution on Constitution Day. And this resolution removes any recognition of Pearl Harbor Day or 9/11. And in the last 200 years, these were the only major attacks in our homeland by foreign killers that tragically killed thousands of innocent Americans. I wonder what percentage of our students do not recognize the significance of December 7th to Americans at this time? And I believe these days cry out and need remembrance to ensure that we learn from those events and maintain efforts to protect our citizens from foreign enemies. And I think they should never be forgotten by Americans, and it's the duty of public schools to ensure that they are not. In conclusion, the new policy as drafted that we will be voting on at our next meeting, I believe is wholly insufficient to ensure an appropriate level of instruction in American traditions, culture, and history takes place in our schools and lacks what is needed to ensure achieving the goal, which is our existing goal of instilling patriotism, patriotism in our students.
Any other comments or comment by board? Seeing none, that concludes our discussion of non-action items. That brings us back around to public comment. Is Ms. Crowden able to connect? Ms. Crowden, if you're able to unmute, you have three minutes.
All right, great. Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Celeste Hodge-Growden, and I serve as the president and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus. I am providing testimony in support of memorandum 030 tonight on my own behalf. I would like to begin my testimony tonight in the same way which this board policy begins, by acknowledging that I, like our school board, encourage activities that instill pride in our country. I appreciate the sentiment as a proud American and also am grateful for this implied and explicit flexibility the statements, the statement affords. Patriotism is defined as the devoted love, support, and defense of one's country. The revision to policy before the school board this evening will help ASD honor this concept. The proposed revision provides pathways for students to engage in age and developmentally appropriate patriotic activities. It reinforces the daily reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance and increases opportunities for JROTC programs to be integrated into school activities, which honor the ways in which our country is truly great. The draft policy also protects our students and their ability to demonstrate patriotism in culturally appropriate and relevant ways. When the dust settled, ASD's 2023 to 2024 enrollment was calculated at 42,858 students. 48.6% of those students attended a traditional neighborhood elementary school. 57.7% of those students were classified as economically disadvantaged. By my count, there are at bare minimum 42,858 unique ways to celebrate and embrace patriotism within the Anchorage School District. Students begin, being allowed to bring their unique and true selves to this conversation is essential if any patriotic exercise is to be meaningful and relevant. I hope it is not lost on the board that your buildings and various corners of the municipality look nothing alike. While Bear Valley Elementary School has a population which is 71% white and only 9% economically disadvantaged, Tyson Elementary School welcomes a student body that is roughly 92% BIPOC and 87% economically disadvantaged. While our community grapples with addressing these systemic issues which relate primarily to necessary housing reform, please adopt policies which honor all perspectives and compensate for past injustice. Which brings me to my final point this evening. In the form, a timely quote regarding the practice of patriotism. "To love your country is to desire to see it become the best version of itself, to point out its failures, to recognize how we each have been complicit in allowing its worst to persist, to work together to create a community in which every resident has all that they need: love, food, shelter, health, peace, prosperity, and are truly treated as equals in every regard." Please adopt ASD memorandum 030 as amended by the school board's governance committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no further votes lined up for comment at this time. And that brings us to section I, our superintendent update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to share just a few words on two topics. The first of which will be our upcoming election day. And the second topic, a few additional comments on right sizing. So if, to support or to recap the memorandum that I sent to the school board and also to the community, I've asked that all schools shift to remote learning for the November 5th election day. And I just want to speak verbally to this, that this was not a decision that was made lightly. But it is in light of the fact that thousands of people will depend on our school buildings to vote this upcoming November in what's sure to be a high turnout election. And from my vantage point, it's clear that our families have a baseline expectation of basic visitor management measures in our schools when they're in school, particularly in this day and age. I notice that our buildings are getting more safe, not less safe. We're instituting more secure safety vestibles in more of our elementary schools. Despite our, you know, very, very scarce financial resources, we're making small investments towards things like personnel so we can mitigate weapons in our buildings and other security upgrades. To manage a high-volume election, we would have had to suspend or strongly adjust those protocols in most of our buildings to accommodate the number of voters that we expect on this day. From my vantage point, in an ideal scenario, our students would be able to attend school, and the election could be held in a more isolated area. What's, let's say, a separate entry point, a separate space for that process to take place. But unfortunately, our building designs just don't accommodate that reality. So now is the time to look ahead, and I plan to ask my team to proactively look at our calendars so we can work in collaboration with the school board to make the needed changes in future years. Because it pains me to say this, but I think the reality is, is that this could be a new norm for major elections moving forward because we need to balance the role that our public facilities play during one of our country's most sacred processes with our community's expectation of a baseline visitor management and safety protocol in our school buildings. So, that said, things may look differently in future years. I'm not committing to remote learning as the only solution to this issue moving forward. There are other solutions that we could bring before the board, such as a staff development day on election day. That's just one of other ideas that we can discuss, but I'm ready to have those conversations in the future as we get closer to looking at our calendars for future years. So with that said, that, that's what I wanted to just mention verbally on the topic of election day on November 5th. I have a couple of comments that I want to share with the board on right sizing and the community, just to catch us all up to speed. So we're transitioning into our next phase of gathering feedback on right sizing our schools. So I'm asking our community to fill out a survey, which you can find at ASDK12.org/rightsize. I appreciate the feedback that we've received to date. Community members understandably fall on a wide spectrum when it comes to this issue of discussing the idea of closing, consolidating, and repurposing our buildings. But on the whole, I, I do want to be clear that there is support for exploring right sizing further. Our survey data suggests that 70% of respondents support the idea of right sizing in some way. support the idea of right sizing in some way, shape, or form. But there is work to be done because when you dig a little deeper, there are some community members that support right sizing schools, but they have some concerns about their neighborhood school being discussed. There's also some concerns about special programs and the future of those as we think about our right sizing plan. So I understand that this is a nuanced conversation, but it's the right thing to do given the strong amount of support that we've seen in this survey to continue that conversation. And I want to be clear that this is not the first time that we've asked the community this question. We've asked community members a similar question two years ago when we hosted town halls to discuss specific buildings that were reviewed for closure. And an overwhelming majority indicated they were interested in the idea of closing schools, but there were a lot of concerns around the process, which is why we've made some substantial changes to process, such as right now focusing not on building names themselves, but a transparent process of creating a rubric that we want to put forth before the community so that there is some sense and some rhyme or reason that the community can understand and articulate for how we're selecting buildings as part of a right sizing plan. So, and then there was a third data point where last year the governor's office actually implemented a statewide poll. But they asked a similar question. Anchorage residents also expressed interest in the idea of closing schools as an option of other options to, of which were of interest to the community. But with that said, these next couple of months are going to be highly emotional for reasons that are completely understandable. But please know that the reason that we're having this conversation in the first place is because right sizing our footprint presents an opportunity to elevate the levels of academic service. And that's despite the fact that we're in a period of nearly a decade of very flat, unstable, and oftentimes unpredictable school funding. So it's not the perfect solution, but we're doing this not because of some sort of financial dollar speed gain. As board members pointed out, you can't completely separate the financial piece. But really what drives me is when I look at the data ten years from now, things are not looking good. And I know there's a lot of people that don't want to believe the data. But believe me when I tell you that we have fewer families that have young children in our buildings. So there may be an influx of people that come to Anchorage. I surely hope that there is. But I'm still not convinced that that means that we'll see the increase in the number of young children in our buildings that we might hope for or expect. So we need to have that conversation. It's not up to me to completely make that decision. I'm doing that in partnership with our community and our school board. But I do need to be the champion for having this conversation in the first place because if I don't, I worry that by taking no action, we're going to see fewer and fewer services when we serve the same number of buildings that we served when we had five thousand more young students in our buildings. So with that said, I want to thank the community for your engagement to date. And we truly do value your feedback. And I again encourage you to visit our website, ASDK12.org/rightsize and take that survey that'll help us understand that if we were to move forward in this direction, what role should the age of a building play? What role should the opportunities to decrease class sizes or increase academic resources play into this process? And there's much more that we'll ask of you. Is that a perfect survey? No, but is it getting at the actual things that we'll need to look at? When all things, when push comes to shove and we need to make some decisions, I believe that they do. So with that said, on that sad note, I'll conclude my remarks.
And time for board member comments. This time I will start over to the right with Member Bellamy.
Would we be allowed to ask questions of the superintendent?
I'm trying to recall if we normally do that on the superintendent's floor. Yeah, I'm sorry. If there are questions, Member Donnelly.
Thank you. Security remains a huge issue, and I appreciate the administration's commitment to try and find a way to hire some additional security officers in our schools. Thank you for that. I remain very concerned that our traditional number of APD student resource officers, school resource officers is down to ten from fourteen. That's, that's, there was only fourteen to protect our high schools and one middle school traditionally that they were directly stationed to. We certainly have some major gaps now in that coverage. So in considering alternatives to exit ways to facilitate greater safety in our schools, I was wondering if the school district has done any studies or analysis of the potential increase in safety that could be achieved by reducing the number of uncontrolled access points in our high schools?
Thank you, Member Donnelly. I think that's an excellent question. To my knowledge, I'm not aware of any recent studies on access controls in our buildings. But that said, I am very intrigued by this information because it's my belief that if we have fewer access points, the safer our schools can be. Now, where the rub is, is that in our buildings that host the most numbers of students are high schools. The sheer volume of students that need to enter that building in the morning to check in is really where that bottleneck is. So for example, if I were to say effective today, only one entry point at all of our high schools moving forward, there would be bottlenecks that would need to be addressed. With that said, now that we're moving forward with our weapons mitigation tactics that we discussed with the board a few weeks ago, we can start piloting what that controlled access looks like. And for your benefit, Member Donnelly, I'd like to ask the team to look into whether we have data that we could provide to you on the current state of affairs. And what are the considerations if we started limiting our access points now, particularly in our high schools? Because I do think that there is benefit worth exploring.
Further questions to the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move to member comments and I'll start to my right with Member Bellamy.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the board for your indulgence. Let me be a half hour late for, well, maybe forty minutes late getting back for our meeting. I was able to listen in to the monitoring report conversation and the questions that I had were also addressed during that time. Just a few reminders that the joint assembly meeting is coming up next. Is it next week or the week after? The twenty-seventh, whatever day that is. I think it's a Thursday. And the committee, our committee meetings, the chairs, if you can confirm that the date for those as we go around, that would be great. Other than that, good meeting. Thank you.
Member Lawson.
Um, thank you for serving up the invitation to talk about the finance committee. Our next meeting will be at noon on Thursday, September twenty-sixth. I'll say that that will be followed by the board assembly meeting the day after, on the twenty-seventh. I wanted to share that I attended Stellar's fiftieth anniversary celebration with Dr. Bryant and many members of the community and a really big cake last week. And it was, although I am not directly a part of the Stellar community, the enthusiasm that the collective body assembled there was just warm and contagious. And I was really touched by one of the founders who was back for the celebration. Mr. Reed, is that somebody you knew? Bob, he was tall? All right. Anyways, he spoke about, you know, how these educators and parents came together with a vision and not much else. And it was a vision for a school that had more doors and windows into the world than it had walls. And he was just, he was a gem and it was just really a remarkable opportunity to celebrate a vision having been put out there and have been turned into a reality that has transformed so many students and families' lives over fifty years. So I wanted to extend my congratulations to that community. And I guess I also wanted to say that last night with a parent hat on, I attended one of the three math discussions that the district had both yesterday. I think there was one during the board meeting tonight. There was one. This is regarding the middle school math changes. And I think rather than get it technical, I would just ask for additional public clarification. I don't know that, I think that additional public information about the recommendations, the new practices the administration is putting forward, it'd be a great, a great thing to put on a Hot Topics page so people can see the slide decks, learn more. If there's going to be a Q and A, just wanted to extend that there may be some uncertainty. And then I am really looking forward to some upcoming events. Both ROMIG and MIRIS received some substantial grants to review their fitness rooms. So I expect a lot of push-ups and pull-ups and whatnot. There was a great video that I know students created over at ROMIG in order to win the grant. And at one point, the video panned down to a student pedaling an exercise bike without a pedal. And so maybe that was a compelling part of the student argument for a new exercise room. But anyways, looking forward to the celebrations. There is the, there's a VOA session coming up to better understand our mental health supports and partnerships. There's a Make It Monday forum. There's the Ford NGL designation event. So looking forward to learning more, connecting with the community and visiting schools.
Member Wilson.
Well, you covered a few things on my list, so I'm not going to go back over them, but there's lots of wonderful things. One of the, the other things on my list is the King Tech Industry Partner Night tomorrow evening. And they have, King Tech has such amazing, robust partnerships, so I look forward to attending that as well. And I'm hoping to attend the Make It Monday forum. Actually, I was, I was at the Make It Monday event this week and there was lots of conversation that came up about the Academies of Anchorage. So partners are really excited about the Academies of Anchorage. So there's, there's many, many opportunities for me to listen in when industry partners get to talk about the work that they're doing with Anchorage School District. So I, I love to hear that. Lots of excitement out there. Also wanted to confirm that our communications committee is next Thursday, America, next Thursday at one. We, we have that fifteen-minute buffer now, so what time are we starting? One thirty, just confirming we're starting at one thirty. And in case you missed it, we sent notifications, ASD sent notifications about pertussis, AKA whooping cough, impacting the district and how to stay healthy, school safety, and how supporting ASD in addressing school threats and false threats is important. And new reading for life tips and how to stay involved in the new curriculum, as well as the superintendent mentioned, the election day changes and the new right sizing ASD survey. So please take the time to read the important information that the ASD has published. Thank you.
Student Member Pack.
I would like to take this time to address one of the testimonies today on my attendance, Polaris K-12. And starting from this school year, every day in the morning, our principal does recite the Pledge of Allegiance over the intercom system, and we've been doing that every day. So I just wanted to get that known. And also I've been, I want to share that I was invited to speak at the principal's conference, which is coming up next Friday, and I do like to report on how it goes in the next meeting.
Member Donald.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, September seventeenth, is Constitution and Citizenship Day. And this day commemorates the September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven signing of the United States Constitution. And as I mentioned before, federal law requires each educational institution that receives federal funds to hold an educational program about the US Constitution for its students. And I sincerely believe that our students and our community would benefit if the board was to adopt some minimum standards for our schools to recognize the anniversary of the signing of our amazing constitution.
Thank you. Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next meeting of the Governance Committee is the twenty-sixth, a week from Thursday at eleven AM. No other comments. Thanks.
Member Higgins.
I'll start by just simply saying that last Thursday, I attended the ribbon cutting for Dr. Lewis Sears, the STEM readiness learning lab at the King, King, King Creo, King High Tech High School. And very impressive listening to the history that Dr. Lewis had in, within the school district, the teaching in multiple locations and for its principals. And very impressive. And I included donations from the Omega Brothers for 3D printers. And which, if you've ever seen those, those are really cool. I've got a daughter with one and it's really fun to watch what she does with it. But it got me thinking in terms of what we used to do on the board. When I used to come, when I first got on the board a long time ago, that corner where they've got the screen upright down was set up so that a band came in and played music from different schools to start before, like before the board met. Then we found out we didn't have permission for the music, so it kind of went away. I understand that. But we used to always have some sort of celebrations and some recognitions for students and, and teachers and staff that have achieved things that are very recognizable and that gives them a chance to get appreciation from the board. And it's something I miss. We just went to the, with the Chugiak, with the Olympic medalists and watched the celebration. And there's so many things going on in the ASD right now. There are things to celebrate and it would be nice to get some recognition. When I first got on four years ago, we had a session up here with introductions with all the new principals so the board could have that connection. We just haven't done anything like that. And with ten thousand employees, we've got so many things going on. And with so many kids, we've got so many special events that we could use. And it serves as a role model, it serves as recognition and appreciation. And I hope we can somehow get back to that at some point. It would be nice to be able to, to be able to express our, you know, outstanding achievements that we've got going on in school district every day. So just something out there. And that's kind of what the Dr. Lewis Sears triggered for me. His, his, he was absolutely role model. And the exceptional impact he had on so many kids is tremendous. But there were so many other activities going on with the ASD that I hope we somehow make sure that we have that connection and show that appreciation a little bit more. Thank you.
Would respond to Member Higgins. I brought this up at the meeting that I have with Dr. Bryant and Member Jacobs and a couple of the senior staff by Zoom in preparation for every meeting. Ms. Grant, who is a former board executive assistant, mentioned that one of the problems with that was that when you do it, there are always three or four other groups that go, what's wrong with us? How come we weren't recognized as well? And you, because there are a lot of great things going on every day. There are teams winning championships. There are kids doing great work in our community. There are just all these different things that are going on. And she said, you, you can do it, but just be prepared for some blowback from, because you can't recognize everybody that does work at a certain level that makes our schools work and be the places they are. So it is something that, that we've thought about and are thinking about because it does help tie the community to the board at least. But it does come with certain speed bumps that we have to figure out as well. I did want to say also that I support Dr. Bryant's decision about November fifth. And it's, it is a very mixed thing because I have been in a school when voting was taking place. And of course, in, in secondary, when classes change, usually voting is being done in a common area. And that means students wind up going right through the mix. And they, they see the ballot booths, they see people coming in and out. There's a lot of value in that. I'm going to say also, in my time as an educator, I went from a time when no one really paid any attention to who was in the building. And we, it took a few years to convince staff that, that we couldn't just do that anymore. And today, you know, I think if somebody's walking through a building and they don't have an ID badge on, either as a visitor from the office or maintenance staff or whatever, someone's going to stop them. And historically, that wasn't the case. It took a long time. And so the incongruity of day-to-day being like that. But then there's one day where literally anybody can wander into the building and, and mix. And we, we don't have a way to isolate those sections of the building. It's an unfortunate reality and, and we see the potential devastation that can come from it. Um, it's unfortunate. Um, I do hope that students and staff will take this planned distance learning day to help sharpen skills on distance education. Uh, because I think that's, that's part of the adult world now or a whole lot of situations where, uh. In-person training may be difficult or extremely expensive. Uh, I think most people in their different professions are going to have, um, distance meetings, meetings over Zoom, that kind of thing. We want our students to, to graduate with that skill because it, it is different. I mean, we watched boards adjust painfully to being on Zoom. And then when we started meeting in person again, you saw that they kind of gotten out of the practice of being in person and that took a little while to adjust again. So I think there is some value in, in practicing both, um, and, and being better at it on the unexpected days where we will. Will have to resort to it depending on weather or other conditions or whatnot. Uh, other than that, just want to say again, we are about a month in and it's been. I don't know, I, maybe relatively smooth, this is the right word, but it has been well managed. And again, that falls to staff doing whatever they have to do. Uh, I know buses, bus routes are being adjusted. Um, people are kind of learning the new traffic patterns. Uh, there is a lot of change. And change is hard. It's a lot harder than keeping things the same. Um, and people have gotten through it with greater or lesser, uh, success, but we are moving forward on it. And I thank everyone that has been part of it. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Second, thank you. We have been seconded. We are adjourned.